I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Good to see everybody out tonight. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from April nineteenth, minutes from the budget work session on April the twenty-fifth, and minutes from the regular council meeting on April the twenty-fifth. Are there any questions, corrections? None? Not will first as submitted. Next item is the report of town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Black, members of council. Actually, I don't really have much in the way of an administrative report, but I see that he's here, so I want to recognize Wayne Hale on a very historic occasion and ask that he would come forward. While I'm asking, you don't have to. And I will actually now turn it over to Mayor Black for a special statement.
Yeah, I'll come out there. We got a little presentation for you, Wayne.
So were you as fine as you.
I like it, Tom.
I know you've been here this long.
Actually, I thought it had been longer than thirty-two.
Wayne started his career here with the town of Bedford on February the first nineteen ninety-one, what was then the city of Bedford, as the engineering technician under Dave Ballard. Dave retired in late nineteen ninety-two, leaving Wayne on his own as an engineer department of one. Nineteen ninety-four, Wayne was promoted to engineering services coordinator. Then on July one, twenty fourteen, he became the project administrator. Some of his highlights during his thirty-two-plus years with the town included becoming a certified zoning administrator in twenty seventeen through the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials. He became a certified erosion and sediment control inspector in nineteen ninety-five through the state of Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. He completed the locally administered projects qualifications program through the Virginia Department of Transportation and has applied for and completed many PDOT grant projects during his time at the town. He was also key in applying for and receiving approximately six million dollar grant from PDOT for the McGee Street Bridge Replacement Project. Before twenty thirteen, his department assigned and oversaw many water, sewer, stormwater, and sidewalk projects in-house. In two thousand and one, before President Bush's National D-Day dedication visit, he even got to spend a week with the President's Secret Service, in fact, at the site for security purposes. Wayne has also served on the Keep Bedford Beautiful Commission and participated in numerous cleanups in town. Anybody that does, Wayne, also knows his faith and commitment to his church and to his family. Wayne has never met a stranger and always has a smile when you see him. His depth of knowledge will be missed here at the town for sure. Wayne, please enjoy your retirement and time with your family as well serve. So here's a little token of our appreciation for you many years of service and enjoy your retirement.
And I enjoyed it so much, I made sure my son's born on my boss's birthday.
All right, next item, appearances before council. We have one person signed up this evening. Bob Davis, Mr. Davis, if you'd like to come up and give us your thoughts. If you would, just give us your name and address for the record. You know how this works, kind of. We typically try to limit it to three minutes, just whenever, yeah.
Good evening, I'm Bob Davis. I live at nineteen seventy-one Johnson School Road in Taxton. The current district six supervisor in Bedford County, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the folks that I represent in Town and Country subdivision in Bedford County. And I'm here to ask you all to vote no for annexing any part of Bedford County as part of the two thousand and thirteen reversion agreement. Excuse me, I need to grab some. You can take that in three minutes. I've got a, I sent some of you on the board this evening a bit of text from the original agreement. It's section thirteen point eight amendment to the agreement, and I'm just going to read it. It said, "This agreement may be amended, modified, or supplemented in whole or in part by mutual consent of the city for the town and the county by a written document of equal formality and dignity duly executed by the authorized representative of the city or the town and the county without requiring further commission, review, or court approval." And I've sent that at least to three or four of you. Of course, the question, why no, Mr. Davis? Why vote no? And I ask on behalf of those citizens that I represent these questions. What's the benefit going to be to these current residents if annexation moves forward? They already have trash pickup if they choose it, and each of us here knows that we value our right to choose. This is the United States of America, and for the most part, we have the right to choose. So if they want to pay twenty-five dollars a month to a well-established business, the Sharp brothers, they can do that. If they want to haul their own trash off, as you know, they can do that now. The town will leave them no choice. We'll charge them twenty-five dollars a month, which amounts to three hundred dollars a year, which adds significantly to their tax burden. They already have police protection under Bedford County Sheriff. They also have animal control, which they probably won't have at least as current under the town. And I'm not throwing stones at you guys over that manner. They have fire and EMS, and I appreciate the cooperation that's extended by the town during, you know, emergencies that you guys offer in your fire department. They have the essential services, including water, service, sewer. Currently, their tax rate is very affordable. They, many of them are on a fixed income, as you've been told, and I won't belabor that point. But for them to pay any more than what they're currently paying is going to be a significant burden. And the best numbers that I have been able to come up with show that those folks over there in Town and Country are going to pay between the increased tax rate, the combination of the town and the county tax rate, and the trash pickup. They're looking at close to eight hundred dollars a year annually as an increase. And, you know, some of us here can really relate to that. That places a burden on us. So for all this to count, the town will net out about a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year. That is about sixty-seven thousand in additional tax revenue, again, based on some numbers that I've asked the county to put together for me, and then the trash pickup, solid waste. Something to think about. I've been told by someone who knows that a new trash pickup truck costs around two hundred thousand dollars. And then you're going to have to add to that two competent operators. And I, we all know in this role today, it's very difficult to get good help. So I would speculate that you're going to be spending about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand in salaries for new operators for this two hundred thousand dollar garbage truck. And that doesn't include benefits. You're also going to have to add to your police force, and, you know, I don't think you could hire a good police officer for under fifty thousand. That's what we've been shown. And then, of course, a police cruiser is going to run somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty thousand when it's fully equipped. That's a significant expense. And I'm sure each one of you guys can balance a checkbook, and I'd really like to ask you to think long and hard. Is it really worth what you're going to be getting on an annual basis? And these folks that currently live here in Town and Country, I went over there and spoke to every one of them just about, and a lot of them told me that the reason they live in Bedford County is because they appreciate the low tax rate and the quality of life. And I'm not, again, disparaging the town of Bedford, but these folks, a lot of them moved in there for that. Also, back in two thousand and thirteen, when this reversion agreement was handed to us, I think it was probably the best deal that was able to be gotten. I, I know that some of you think, well, you know, why didn't these folks do something sooner? And, and again, I know for myself, I've always relied on my representatives to do the best for me, honestly and forthrightly. And I think many of you, all of you, can relate to that. You know, we grew up in a country where we believed the best in the people that were representing us. And, and I want to say that each one of us, that's, I know for me, that's my heart. Bob Carson, you know that there's been a couple times in pouring down rain, I've stopped over on South Street and cleaned out a plugged up drain in the street. And again, no, no bad will toward the folks that work in the town of Bedford doing maintenance, but you were all headed out to tour to help me as I finished up because the drain was overflowing. And I take my job very seriously as a supervisor, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I really, really want to ask each one of you to look inside yourselves and think about how you would feel if you were forced to pay another, let's say, eight hundred dollars a year in tax on your property. And you're really not going to receive anything more for it, perhaps a sidewalk. But quite honestly, if you do the math on the garage truck and other things that are going to have to be added to it, plus you're going to have to have other maintenance people, I mean, quite honestly, we know today that it's very difficult to hire maintenance people, competent maintenance people, people who don't tear things up, people who take care of things and go out and fulfill their obligations. So I'm not trying to say anything ugly here, but if you've got plugged drains in my district, in the town, and I'm only using this for an illustrative purpose, think about the responsibility you're about to take on with Town and Country. I, I, when I look at these numbers, I don't think it really pencils out. I think that's about all I want to say this evening, and I thank you all for listening. And I really, really, again, ask you to consider, noting that that section in the reversion agreement amendment gives you the opportunity to vote no, because you do have the right to vote, you can vote no, while annexing these folks and allow them to continue living as best they can at the standard of living that they currently have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you for coming.
All right, next item, council comments.
Okay, first, I want to welcome everybody here to the meeting. Thank you for coming out. Thank, I just want to recognize our supervisor, Bob Davis, for coming out. Thank you for coming out tonight. I just wish more people would come out more often.
I just want to thank Councilman Johansson for saving the pig on Peak Street. And they are putting the flowers up in town to make our town more beautiful. And I think I don't remember if I commented on D W. Thank you for the cleanup weekend. They are, I believe, that you are the, keep Bedford Beautiful Commission Cleanup Day unit.
Bob?
Yeah, like I said, D W., thank y'all for, and the elderly service group that came down from Liberty University. Got a chance to meet those young, young folks that came down and, so I guess spent most of their day on Saturday doing various projects, picking up trash on the streets and helping out the museum. So we appreciate the effort y'all put into that, and hopefully next year, we can get a few more people engaged in that and, and get back to having a little bit bigger crowd, but wanted to give a shout out to that group from Liberty University that came in. Bruce, like I said, good job. I mean, it was quite a tale when Bruce called me the other day when there was a wild pig, I guess, out on, on Peak Street. So he, he helped along with our police officer and, I guess, the Bedford County Sheriff's Department came in and helped. Travis, anyway, but that's all I've got, so thank you for that.
Report of council committees, the finance committee met.
Finance committee met today, six o'clock, and addressed a uncollectible receivable, just something we're going to have to deal with in, over the next couple months, figure out what to do about it.
All right. Any revisions to the agenda, anything anybody needs to, all right? If not, we'll move right into the first public hearing, which is our proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Warner?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the town council on Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock P M. in the council chambers of the town municipal building in relation to the budget for the town of Bedford for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, at which time any citizen of the town shall have the right to attend and state his or her views. Detailed copies of the proposed budget have been available for inspection during normal office hours in the office of the town manager and the office of the clerk of council.
All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing on our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget. Anybody wish to speak? None? All right, with that, we'll close the thing, the public hearing. All right, and then we got a public hearing next on the Hilltop Community Revitalization Project Housing Grant Application Phase Two.
Town of Bedford will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. In the town council chambers located at two fifteen East Main Street. The purpose of the meeting is to solicit public input on the proposed Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, proposal to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Hilltop Community Revitalization Project Phase Two. Residents of the project area are encouraged to attend. The Hilltop Community Revitalization Project Phase Two proposal will include the following activities. Project intent, funding, eligible households, maximum CDBG funds available per home, and application schedule. The draft CDBG proposal will be presented for comment along with information on the projected beneficiaries, including the number of low and moderate income residents to benefit from the proposed project and plans to minimize displacement. Citizens will also be given the opportunity to comment on the town of Bedford's past use of CDBG funds. A fact sheet on the proposed project and the draft proposal has been available at the town of Bedford or is available at this council meeting, and for further information, interested parties can contact the Planning and Community Development Office. Comments and grievances can also be submitted in writing to the Town of Bedford Planning and Community Development Office or by phone at five eight seven six zero zero six, or fax at five eight seven six one four three, or relay seven one one for the hearing impaired until five o'clock P M. yesterday.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing on the Hilltop Community Revitalization Project. Anybody wish to speak? Like I said, just, if you would, just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Fredo Ranger. I'm currently with the Community Development, I'm sorry, the San Virginia Planning District Commission. Our address is eight oh eight, I'm sorry, eight twenty-eight Main Street, Lynchburg, Virginia. We currently provide consulting and grant management services for the town of Bedford. So thank you again, Mayor Black and Town Council for hearing me, as was a little too in the advertisement. The town of Bedford, we're seeking funding to extend community benefits through the CDBG program for the Hilltop Community Grant Program Phase Two area. Phase Two area, if you look at the inserts that were given to you guys, the Phase Two area is defined as the area between West King Street to the north, Liberty Street to the south, and is contained by Crenshaw Street to the west and Liberty Street to the east. The goal is to apply and receive CDBG funding in the area to assist with housing rehabilitation repairs. And that will be provided to eligible families with zero percent interest, forgivable loans, as we did with Phase One. We were able to conduct a community meeting on the seventh of March. We had over twelve families that come out and showed support and input and approval for moving forward with a particular application. I mean, at this time, we don't have any CDBG activities that are planned to displace any of the community residents at this time. So as of right now, we have currently one active CDBG program, or project grant, currently going on, and that is Phase One of the Hilltop Community Project. We have progressed, as you can see in the pages two and three in your package. We've had our first substantial redconstruction finished on Crenshaw Street. You can see the development that is there. And it was, this particular project in Phase One was awarded last year. It was awarded nine hundred, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. So right now, with the pending grant, grant awards that are with the town of Bedford, we have approximately about seven hundred thousand to about a million that is available for this particular project, the maximum possible award of one point two five million that we're looking for. So currently, right now, the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Board has committed to up to fifteen thousand dollars to help cover the pre-contract rehab specialist cost. And that helps with the conduction, conducting the H Q S inspections and also the cost estimates that are needed for the application that will be submitted at the opening room first. So right now, we have, the, the program itself is, is very competitive. They have, they have about eighteen to twenty, twenty-one million in the Commonwealth available for funding, but they get about fifty million in requests. So right now, the, the main, the main objective for them is to see interest from the community, interest from the town leaders, and support as well, and that's pretty much the, the key to getting awarded. I think also with us already being awarded last year, it helps with us moving forward with Phase Two because they like to see continuation of community development. So that's pretty much all that I have. I would like for you guys to approve the resolution that will be presented later for the application. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, we close the public hearing. Next item, request to close the streets for the high school senior parade.
Sarah Reynolds of Bedford is requesting permission to hold a high school graduating seniors parade on Sunday, May twenty-first, beginning at three o'clock P M. and to close the following streets. Bedford Avenue Extension from Fourth Street to the curve of the Recreation Field, Ashland Avenue from the curve of the Recreation Field to the Elks Home Driveway, College Street from Ashland Avenue to Peak Street, Peak Street from College Street to North Bridge Street, North Bridge Street from Peak Street to East Main Street, and East Main Street from North Bridge Street to Odie Street. They will notify the fire department, police department, and Bedford County Fire and Rescue of the street closings, and the residents of the affected streets will also be notified and will be provided ingress and egress to their homes. Tonight, town council is requested to close streets for the high school senior parade on Sunday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, beginning at three o'clock P M.
All right, do we have a motion?
So, move.
The only thing, Bart, I'm looking at this, is this email, this recent email talks about a three-thirty start time?
Sorry, I didn't even look at the email.
Because I knew Liberty was having their baccalaureate, baccalaureate.
Do we, is it three-thirty, D W.? Oh, great. Perfect.
Yeah, come on up.
Miss Gutter?
My name is Casey Gutter, one six seven three three Big Island Highway at Big Island. I've got a senior at Liberty. We're hoping, we had planned on three-thirty. That was the original plan. Then there's this rumor of baccalaurate going on, and we didn't know about that. That's supposed to start at two. So we were talking about possibly moving it back until four. That way, everybody can still go to baccalaurate and still be a part of the graduation parade. Stanford's doing baccalaurate at six, so they would still have time to participate and still get to their baccalaurate as well.
So you're thinking starting at four instead of three-thirty? Is that okay? Okay. All right. And is this, D W., is this kind of the rolling thing, rolling parade again, kind of? I mean, are you going to have to do a bunch of barricade work or not? Kind of, I mean, are you going to have to do a bunch of barricade work or not?
We're still going to put the barricades up, but what we'll do is like, we'll have to follow them. As soon as they go through intersection, we'll.
Just taking them, okay, so just kind of that rolling process?
It will stay closed for the whole thing. When they're at, get to Main Street, all the rest of it will be open.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Just for your information, Little Town Players Play, New York Shop of Artists, is finishing up on the 21st. The play starts at 2:00, it's going over between 4:00 and 4:30. So you might have people coming out of the theater wanting to leave the town, and you're cutting off a portion of the street and all around the rec field and everything, so.
What time do they get out of the play?
The play is around two hours long, it starts at 2:00. So about the same time as you are starting your parade and closing off college and around the rec field, people who live out of town and don't know the town very well are going to have to try to figure out how to get out there and back to where they, just for your information.
So you're route, you're coming up west feet, I mean, you're coming up from West Gate, and then you're coming up around the rec field, or you're coming up now?
Yes, coming up by the rec field and coming through. Just like the Christmas parade.
So you're lining up at 6:00? Is that where you're lining up at?
Yes, we're going to line up at the church. They've already given permission for us, everybody to kind of meet there, get their vehicles ready, and then leave there, go by the rec field, come down by the primary school, and it'll be the same way that the Christmas parade is.
I got a question. Can you, instead of going to college, can you just go up Bedford Avenue and turn and do it that way? And that will keep everything open?
You can do whatever you want.
I mean, that's a suggestion. They coming out there?
I think the way that's going, they're going to decide if you come out and come in.
If you come out at 6:00, you can come right under the railroad trust and come up Bedford Avenue.
But that's where people are going to be coming out of. From the outside, they're going to be coming.
Yeah, I'm going to say college, that's what I was suggesting, yeah.
But if you go college, I mean, what does it take, about 15 minutes to get by? I mean, is that typical, in the past, D W, so I mean.
It'll go fast.
So I mean, if you start at 3:45, you're gone right there about 4:00 o'clock, and then.
If you go and stay on through, if they're moving all the time, it shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be that big of a truck.
I don't see where it's going.
We just have barriers, or we have officers that could be?
We're going to have both, we're going to have public works and police officers at different intersections.
So they could sort of help ease with that traffic and while they're going through, right? It wouldn't be that big of a hole up, right? Okay.
If anyone was lost or confused, they could probably guide them as to how to get out.
D W, you don't seem to think this is going to be a problem?
I don't think so, I think it works for me.
Yeah, me too.
I'll defer to you.
All right, so start time 4:00?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Do it right.
All right, okay. So we got a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Do we need a minute by changing the time or just leave it like it is?
I think we need to note it's 4:00.
All right, so you want?
So I make a motion that we allow the parade happen, that it will start at 4:00.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Carson?
Right.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes. Thank you all so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into new business resolution for the Hilltop Community Revitalization Project Housing Grant.
The town began work on the Hilltop Community Revitalization Project as a follow-up implementation strategy to the school-to-school slash Bridge Street Revitalization Project. The town submitted an application for a Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, in April of 2021 for the revitalization project for 11 selected houses. That first application submittal for $921,983 was awarded for Phase One and will continue through 2023. The plan has been, the plan has been to submit requests for three phases of CDBG grants, and staff has been working with the Central Virginia Planning District Commission for these first two phases. The first of two mandatory public hearings for the current application was held at the Housing Authority Meeting on March 9th to describe the project and to hear from the public if there were any questions or concerns. No public spoke at that first meeting. The second public hearing was recently conducted at the current town council meeting. The Redevelopment and Housing Authority, along with community members, has served as the project management team. At its meeting on May 11th, the Housing Authority is expected to provide a letter of support for the current application. The town has not requested to provide additional fund match for this second phase of the project. The grant application will request no more than our allowed cap of $1,250,000 from DHCD to rehabilitate or rebuild up to 19 houses over the cycle of this next grant, if awarded. As the application is finalized prior to June 1st, these numbers will change. The Planning District Commission will continue as grant manager if an award is made and will be paid with funds from the grant. Tonight, town council is requested to adopt a resolution authorizing submittal of the Phase Two application.
All right, do we have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Any questions for anybody, just discussing?
Yes, I have a question. So as of right now, the town doesn't have to put any money to this, do we? And if we do, can we afford it?
The answer to your first question is no, we do not. So that makes the answer to the second question, yes, we can.
And I just want to say, I've been involved in this council rep almost, I guess, since April 21. And I keep saying, I'm amazed at the houses that are being renovated and repaired. I mean, it's a great thing for the community, and as Giuffredo said earlier, go down Crenshaw Street and look at the new house that's being built. It's really helped the aesthetics for the Hilltop community, and this is a great thing. And I'm 100% behind it. Hope the rest of y'all are too.
But it's not just happening on Crenshaw.
Yes.
The completed version, it's a lot of work going on on the other streets already.
Right.
And it's coming along good.
Is, are we, so in the Phase One, are we still doing the 11? Is that how many we're doing, 11 houses still in the Phase One? And so we, in the process, where are we? I mean, we're 50% getting through, or 20, are we just starting kind of? I mean, just kind of give us a little bit of update on where we stand on that phase? Because it is a good thing, I mean, and I want the, you know, the public to know what's going on over there.
So right now, currently, we're about 30% complete. We just finished, like I said, the first substantial reconstruction on Crenshaw Street. We did a housing rehab on East King Street. We, two weeks ago, we signed five contracts to move forward with four additional, well, the next four housing rehabs and the next substantial reconstruction, which will take place starting next week, because we have the demo at home before we can actually build it up. So by the time we finish, in time for our application, or the middle of June, we'll pretty much be well past half percent. And so our goal is to finish up Phase One by the end of the year, and then, like I said, this application, Phase Two will pretty much continue right along with it. That's the importance of keeping everything going.
And right now, on the Phase Two, you look like you've got 12 interested, kind of?
Yes, we have about 12, we have about 12 to, I would say, 19 families right now that are interested, so we just have to go do the extensive cost estimates and inspection application, just to kind of just see what the homes look like and see how much it would actually be before we put an application in completely.
Awesome.
You think we could get a golf cart next time?
I wish it was.
It's a good thing you're doing, thank you.
Yeah, and if, maybe, Mary, if you could, just, I'd love to know where they exactly are, or, I mean, at some point, you know, just circle right by and check, you know, I mean, and see the work, I mean, obviously, I've seen the one on Crenshaw, like everybody, but I, you know, I know these other ones are going on too. So if you could maybe just shoot us some kind of email or something, just, when they're substantial, and some of them we won't be seeing because they're inside work, I get that. But, you know, still, I think it would be nice for us to know where all these are just to, so we can have a feel for what, you know.
The next substantial is currently being done on South King, I'm sorry, South Bridge Street, which is right behind the old, I think, what is it?
Federal Training School.
Federal Training.
322 South Bridge, so watch that, because that will be another transformation. It's very similar to that in the footprint. It's very similar to that, so. We've been putting signs up as well to, wanted to get the word out better to the community, because that is just proof that we're doing something. You know, we've had some resistance in the beginning, where there was a little, maybe, just concern that this wasn't going to be real.
Right.
And so as people have seen it coming online, we tried to put signs and draw some attention to it, but being respectful of the property owners who are going there.
Right, right.
Yeah.
These people, you're talking about, a lot of us on the inside, these people would not mind if you once knocked on the door and said, "I'd like to see how this is coming along." They're not, they wouldn't mind doing that, because they appreciate it for what they're getting.
Okay.
So if you would like to see where your money is going, they don't mind that.
I got to say, that house down on Crenshaw Street, it looks a whole different world than it did what it was there. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Anybody got any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showen? Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Right.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
Next item is the resolution authorizing transfer of property to Economic Development Authority.
The town of Bedford owns land on Burks Hill Road that has economic development potential. In order to make this development more efficient and to be able to act in a timely manner for future development, town council is requested to transfer this land to its appointed economic development authority. Tonight, town council is requested to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of certain land to the Economic Development Authority of the town of Bedford.
I make a motion that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing the transfer of land.
Check. All right, any discussion?
This is just, it's just part of the process.
Right, part of the.
Final decisions have been made, and it's my understanding. I spoke with Mr. Lockby today, and I feel comfortable with it.
Okay. Yep, this is an economic development project they're working on, so. And hopefully, we'll be able to announce something soon. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Right.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, next item is a resolution for Business Appreciation Month.
The month of May 2023 has been designated as Business Appreciation Month in Virginia in recognition of the many benefits to Virginia communities derived from their businesses. In appreciation of our industry, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, council is asked to adopt a resolution declaring May to be Business Appreciation Month in the town. And tonight, town council is requested to adopt such resolution as circulated.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution for Business Appreciation Month?
Slow move.
Second.
They can have it.
Bruce, Bruce, Bruce and Bruce.
Bruce and Bruce.
Any comments, discussion?
I think that says it all.
Yep, exactly.
Appreciate it.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Right.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
And the last item is an ordinance re-adopting and reenacting code provisions dealing with traffic laws.
Before you, is an ordinance which re adopts and reenacts Section 34-2 of the Town Code, incorporating by reference current provisions of the Code of Virginia dealing with traffic laws and motor vehicle operation. Failure to adopt this ordinance would mean that offenders would have to be charged under the state law rather than the town law. Any fines collected would then be payable to the state rather than to the town. The ordinance has been posted in three locations in the town in accordance with Section 2-54 of the Town Code. And occasionally, this is a timely issue for us. Town council is requested to adopt the ordinance re-adopting and reenacting code provisions dealing with traffic laws.
Slow move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second.
This is just the same thing that we adopt every year, correct?
Housekeeping, yes, sir.
Yep, so we can get the fines enough to stay.
That's it.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Showen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Right.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, we are adjourned.